And we are live.
Good afternoon, and what a beautiful afternoon it is. I call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners for our staff meeting of June the 15th. Welcome, Madam Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. We also have our clerk to the board and our county administrator also joining us, so welcome.
Thank you.
So we have lots of items on our agenda, so let's get to work. Item number one is a proclamation in recognition of Ohio Women Veterans Day, and Commissioner Drehouse is going to lead that discussion.
Madam President, I'm going to ask your deference. Some of the women are not yet on, so can we hold that for a minute and go to the next item?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Item number two is update on COVID-19, our Hamilton County Health Commissioner, Greg Kesterman.
Well, good afternoon Commissioners, thanks for having me. I will share my screen if you could just confirm that you can see my slideshow.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful, thank you. So it's been probably about a month since I last had an opportunity to brief the commission with regards to COVID-19. And I would like to echo what I said last month, but things continue to trend in the right direction even after so many days since meeting with you. Here in Hamilton County, we still have about 1,900 active cases of COVID-19. That number continues to decline week after week, which is excellent news. The pandemic is continuing to contract. When you look at cases per day, we are actually down around 21 cases per day on average in Hamilton County as a whole. This compares back to December when we were at 716 cases per day. In addition, we continue to see new variants here in Hamilton County. We're at about 100 variants of COVID. The majority of those are the UK variant, where we have about 84 of those cases. Generally speaking, though, the vaccines continue to be effective against the variants, so if you're concerned about catching a variant, I would recommend you get vaccinated. Our percent positivity rate continues to decline as well. When you look at the 14-county region, we are at about 2.6%. And honestly, that that center line is most likely about ready to shift down even further. And then when you dive into just Hamilton County, we are at 2.5%. And once again, that line looks like it's probably about ready to shift down. Our reproductive value has spiked a little bit in the last four or five days, and that is really associated with those couple of days of higher case values. Generally speaking, we are seeing such low cases, the reproductive value can be a little bit sensitive. I have no concern, though, seeing that number with such low caseload being above 1. The last couple of days, which are not reflected in this value, have been lower, so the likelihood that this number continues to hover around 1 or drop closer to 1 is quite high, so no concerns here either. Moving into what we're seeing within our hospital systems, we continue to see great progress in decreasing the number of folks within our hospitals. Today, we are at about 62 patients within our 14-county region within the hospitals, 26 of which are in the intensive care unit. Worth noting, all 26 individuals are on ventilators. I have shared here, as well as on the weekly briefing, the number one way to stay out of the hospital is by getting vaccinated. Nearly all individuals within our hospital systems have had, have not completed their vaccination arrangement or have not taken any vaccine. The vaccine that we have available today is extremely effective at reducing severe illness as well as death from COVID-19. So how are we doing with our vaccination campaign? Hamilton County continues to trend ahead of the state of Ohio. Today, the Ohio Department of Health is reporting that Hamilton County is at 48.84%, which is nearly 400,000 people that are vaccinated. That number is part of the total population. When you look at the Get Out the Vax campaign, they are looking at those individuals over 12, and we have seen 55% of eligible folks within the region getting vaccinated, so we're making progress. What I think is most excellent is that when you look at those individuals over the age of 60, we have successfully vaccinated seven out of 10 people. So this is excellent news. We know those over 60 have the greatest impacts from COVID-19. We know these individuals are most susceptible to severe illness. And so having this group, this population vaccinated, will hopefully help us should we start to see an increase in cases later in the year as folks move back indoors. We do continue to stress with all populations, though, the need to get vaccinated. The chart on the left, you can see every group continues to move up. On the next slide, though, zooming in a little bit, this is the percent change in vaccine uptake by age. So how much are we seeing an increase or decrease in the percentage of vaccines being given out? And when you zoom in, you can really see we've seen quite a decline over the course of the last couple of months. Luckily, we have flattened out, and we actually have even seen a couple of the younger age groups, like the 20 to 29-year-old age group, just slightly starting to take a little bit more vaccine week after week. So we'll continue to watch this. We are not giving away as much vaccine as we were two months ago, but we continue to make progress as a community, and we continue to get vaccine out to those who want it. So here at Hamilton County Public Health, and I'll dive in next on all of the providers. But here, our agency is kind of working to adjust our current model. As the Commissioners know, our team has really done a great job of getting out to the community and doing some of these small-scale clinics at a whole variety of locations, whether it's at a library, a great park of Hamilton County, a business that has requested it, a transit stop or a bus stop, a school, just to name a few of the locations our team has been at. Realizing that these types of locations are really where we're seeing the most need and the most opportunity, we are kind of shifting our model. Our first, on the, on the chart on the bottom, our first location that we're going to maintain full-time hours at is our tuberculosis clinic, which is at 184 East McMillan. No appointment is necessary, and we're offering vaccine kind of the business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. In addition, we've kind of set up a special team that's going to handle some special projects at homebound. They're a group of two nurses that are going around and taking care of some of these special needs. In addition, then, we have three vans now that are operating kind of full-time, including on the weekends. We have two vans that are fully staffed by my team, and we have one van that is staffed by the Ohio Department of Health. And we're looking at these as mobile operation teams. It doesn't necessarily mean they're operating out of the vans. They're just kind of the group of folks and the supplies needed that are going out and kind of staying together as a unit. We are using these to get out even to places like schools, but also we're setting up outside in parking lots and other hard-to-reach locations. This past weekend, we were at a Hispanic soccer tryout and vaccinated 36 individuals. We've gone to breweries and had lines form of families getting their 12-year-old and older folks vaccinated. So we're really excited about this new model, and we think we're going to continue this new model at least through the end of the year. So we set up something kind of longer term that we think will work and kind of function as a standalone unit. As mentioned, we, Hamilton County Public Health is really, quite frankly, just one of now nearly 200 providers within Hamilton County. Pretty much everyone within Hamilton County is within a 10-minute drive of a vaccine location. And because vaccine is available at this point, most locations do not require an appointment. Most locations have an option for you to select the type of vaccine that you want. And so we're really at a good spot. If folks want to get vaccinated, the opportunities exist. And the last slide I have this afternoon is really just me saying thank you to our community. In Hamilton County, we had a lot of folks come together to help with our vaccination efforts and testing efforts, for that matter, whether it's a political subdivision, a fire department, or just businesses and others step up. In the case of fire departments, our fire departments here in Hamilton County participated and were part of the effort to vaccinate 2,200 people. Our fire departments also were responsible for vaccinating over 400 homebound individuals throughout Hamilton County. So as we continue to shift in how we respond to this pandemic, which is still, which is still a pandemic and is still impacting lives here in Hamilton County, I just wanted to pause and just say thanks, because there's been a lot of effort. And that thank you really is extended to you, the county commissioners. All three of you have been extremely supportive of public health and really helped our community to remain focused on what needed to happen to get through this pandemic and get us to the point we are today. I will stop there and turn it back over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Kesterman, and thank you for your thorough update. Look forward to you coming next month. I will open it up for my colleagues if there are any questions or comments to your report. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner Kesterman, and really a good thorough report. And one of the things I liked is that we've been able to pivot when necessary and trying to also take in the ideas. There are people who are stepping up saying, hey, I'd like to have it at my brewery and/or I want to have it at my movie theater, and you've been responsive to that. The other thing is your coordination with all of our health commissioners in Hamilton County, with the city of Cincinnati and Springdale and Norwood. That coordination, I think, has been very good, presenting a one Hamilton County as we fight this COVID. I'm very excited, as you know, about the mobile. I know, starting out, that was kind of, I wanted mobile, 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 and to see it. And not only, I want to highlight this in Hamilton County, something we should be proud of, is that we were the first to say we want to go mobile. We need to take the vaccine to the people instead of people trying to find the vaccine. And the governor picked that up, and it's not only from what we said down here, but now made it mobile across the state. So Hamilton County certainly is the leader in the mobile operation that is now throughout the county, throughout the state of Ohio, and he provided some vans and staff down here as well as across the state. We're excited that another part of the mobile fleet will be hitting the streets here this Saturday. We'll have our Equity and Resource Bus with our partnership with UC Health that will roll out for Juneteenth weekend and continue to roll out and participate. So we got a whole fleet out there. And to the people who haven't gotten vaccinated yet, you know, what are you waiting for? Let's get vaccinated. It's summer. We want to enjoy each other, and we want to get out. So I like to, I also want to just highlight, I really like the thing about the soccer going to these teams. I think that could be something really good. A lot of Little League teams that are out here now and making sure, you know, that's available. So I think that's a really cool idea that you presented as well. So again, I just join with the commission in thanking everyone, because it certainly takes a lot of different entities working together, being creative, and all of our first responders as well to get this. And certainly, work continues to need to be done, but a lot of work has been done. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Commissioner Kesterman, for being with us today. It's always a pleasure. So I just wanted to note that it's good to see that the trends are all still going up, I mean gradually, but still going up. And so, you know, I applaud you for continuing to push, push, push for folks to get vaccinated, because I think, you know, obviously, that's making the difference here when it comes to the rate of infection. And the other thing is, related to the vans, you know, you have, I know it's on your website where you're going and where people can have access to vaccines. Is there, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can be helpful related to pushing up that information out so that people know where you're going to be. It's such a great opportunity, and as you say, you're going into places that where there still is a need to get people vaccinated. So I learn about them by going to your website or calling and saying, hey, you know, where are you guys going to be? I go out to Fretport. I go out to 50 West. But if we can be helpful, pushing out information related to those vans and those mobile units, please let us know, because I think we're all at the ready, especially with the bus coming online too, to push out information related to all of the mobile units, because that is where we are right now. And I just want to make sure people know where we're all headed with this, this mobile effort.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I will certainly continue to share those locations and feel free to promote them on social media or any other ideas. You know, we're, we're going to locations that we think are fun and locations that we know are needed. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity to continue to promote these.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner, once again, for not only hearing us, but listening not only to us, but the public. So thank you for all you do, and we'll be seeing you very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will digress. Commissioner Drehouse, if you're ready to go on the proclamation?
I believe so. Thank you very much. So this is a proclamation in on, in recognition of Ohio Women Veterans Day. Ohio Women's Veterans Day was the 12th of June, and so we're a little tardy, but as you know, we didn't have a meeting on the 12th. So, so we're doing, we're doing it today. I say better late than never. And I really do think this is an important recognition, and there are folks that have joined us via Zoom. I'm going to read off the names of those that have been part of this effort to, behind the recognition. So Nelda Chandler, the second Vice President at Post 644. April Boyle is the fiscal officer at Post 644. Beth Pieser is the Sergeant-at-Arms at Post 644. Jules Kamarda is the former commander for Post 644 and now project director for Equus Workforce Solutions. Peg Albert is the commander of Greater Cincinnati Women's Legion at Post 644. And Victoria Parks is a former Hamilton County Commissioner, as we all know. So I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, and then with your deference, Commissioners, ask one of those individuals to just comment to the importance of the day. So whereas on June 12, 1948, the Women's Armed Services Integration Act was passed, this legislation enabled women to become permanent, regular members of the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, and Air Force Active Duty and Reserve. Whereas June 12 is becoming the day to honor women veterans. The day celebrates the contributions of women veterans and the contributions they have made. Whereas the New York State Assembly recognized the date in 2008 with Women's Veteran Recognition Day. At least 11 states recognize the day by law or by proclamation. And whereas Ohio is home to over 61,697 women veterans, according to a 2017 report from the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. In 2019, Ohio Senator Sandra Williams and Frank Hoagland, both veterans, introduced Senate Bill 77 to designate June 12 as Women Veterans Day. And whereas Governor Dewine signed the bill into law December 13, 2019, the first Women Veterans Day in Ohio was celebrated June 12 of 2020. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim the 12th day of June 2021 as Ohio Women Veterans Day in all of Hamilton County. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know who's on. I have Peg Albert as the person that's going to speak. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, perfect.
I don't see her on.
Yeah, so I don't know if Peg made it.
Oh, all right. Well, then I'm going to leave it to you to decide which of you would like to comment.
So how about you, April? You're a mute.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go. Women veterans throughout, throughout the area are certainly honored, and we express our gratitude for your recognition of the service that women have done in the military. And it's certainly, I think, well overdue, and it's just wonderful that it's taking place right now. And I think we have many, many women here who have served with pride. I know that we would do it all over again, and we just want to thank you for your proclamation.
But I want to say thank you for your service and all of you for your service and your dedication to our community and to the country. So Commissioner Dumas, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, and once again, thank you for your service. Veterans are near and dear to my heart. Now, women veterans are just awesome. And so when Commissioner Drehouse said we were tardy, it probably made you guys cringe, because military, you guys are always on time. So I thank you, Commissioner Drehouse, for bringing it forward and that it was not forgotten. And so thank you once again for your service. Vice President Reese.
Yes, I just want to join and say thank you for your service as well. Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse, for bringing this forward. And when I got word that this was going to be brought forward, I don't know if she was able to get in, but also want to acknowledge Teresa Kent, who is a woman disabled veteran. And, and just wanted to acknowledge her. I think she's trying to get in, but also all of you. And I just think this is so important. So thank you, Commissioner Drehouse, for bringing this forward. And but more importantly, thank you all for your service to our country. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. And I'm looking at Victoria Parks, who just reminisce it, right, sitting right there. So good to see you especially, so.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Victoria.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move forward. Our next item on our agenda is CDBG nonprofit grants and mini planning grant recommendations. And I will open it up. I see Joy is listed first on here. Are you leading the discussion, Joy?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Technical difficulties. I apologize. Well, I'm going to do this. I will speak without a camera. I apologize. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we hear you.
I think my computer froze.
Madam President, I'm happy to do.
I was going to say, Steve, if you wanted to start and then Joy could come in.
Yeah. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. So part of the CDBG program is a relatively small portion for what we call mini planning grants. This is a great collaborative effort between the Division of Community Planning, which I head, and Joy's Division, Community Development. Community development dollars are used more effectively when we're able to do some pre-planning to know what's the best strategy for individual communities. So Joy and her division has set aside $100,000 a year since 2015 to help with this project, and we help administer that through our department.
Very good.
So this year, we had 100,000 to give, and we are recommending allocating $96,290 for the planning grants. This happens again every year, and we solicit that from the jurisdictions that are participants in the program. That's most of the jurisdictions in the county. And we got a good slate of proposals that you can see on this slide. We received seven applications and were able to fund six of them. And so I wanted to speak to them individually. You can see that some folks match some of the federal money, and that does help them in the scoring. So that's one thing that folks can do if they want to score well. We also look forward to people that are members of the Planning Partnership, our group of jurisdictions that supports planning throughout Hamilton County. And we also look for folks, jurisdictions that have limited planning capacity. That's one of the things that, we know that some jurisdictions are blessed with having planning staff, but many of our smaller jurisdictions don't have planning staff, and this is a way to help them out. We also, one of the last things that we look for is to make sure we're spreading the wealth. So folks that have received money in the previous year, we do score them a little less than the following year so that other folks can get in line. I'm just going to quickly go through these projects just to give you a little flavor of what is going on with these mini-grants. So first in line is the city of Harrison. They did a comprehensive plan in 2018, but then wanted to expand on that by looking at specifically their downtown. So that's a place that would be eligible for future CDBG funds, and we're recommending $10,000 for that project. The Village of Addison has its own water system, which has decayed somewhat in the last few years. So they're looking at doing a capital improvement plan to see what kind of things they might need to improve that system. And we're recommending $40,000 for them this year. Delhi Township, lot going on over in Delhi. Delhi Pike, they have the former Remke Biggs that they are redeveloping. There's a plan to do a $60 million development there, and they want to make sure they're getting things right. So they're continuing to fine tune that. One of the things they want to make sure works well is the, the traffic in that area so that folks can actually get to that development, and we don't have much congestion around that development. The city of Madeira, they have been looking to enhance their downtown area. They'd like to connect their downtown to their McDonald Commons Park to help encourage economic development. So they're going to be looking to do a promenade plan, and we're recommending $10,000 for that. The Village of Lincoln Heights, you know that they have great new leadership out there with Joyce Paudreau being their village manager. She's trying to get all the ducks in a row, make sure that she plans and looks at what the infrastructure needs are for Lincoln Heights. So they have asked for a maintenance plan for existing streets and sidewalks. We're recommending $80,500 for that project. And last but not least, Springfield Township, the water nursery site down in the southern part of the township is a space that they're looking to enhance park facilities there, including some trails, and we're recommending $15,000 for that project. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this great program that community development helps us put on.
Thank you so much. I was just going to see if Joy was able to get back on. Joy, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, no, no. I'm ready, though, when you're ready for me. So I'm on my phone.
Okay, so as we look at these mini-grants, are there any questions? Steve, thank you for, for running us through this. As far as legislation, will this be coming to us this Thursday or the following week?
There is no legislation. This is an action that's covered under the action plan. Jeff has the authority to, to provide the awards, and we already have, we already have cooperation agreements with all of our participating communities that cover all of our work.
So no approval from commission, okay.
Yeah, Madam President, if I could just briefly, yeah, so the board provides the authority for the program through the action plan, as Joy said. And while I do have the authority to sign off on them, under that, that plan, we, we do annually bring these back before the board to have that discussion publicly, just to make sure that we're proceeding in the way that meshes with board policy direction.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Enjoy. I'll open it up. Vice President Reese, do you have any comments on that?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one question. You said there were seven that applied, and you were able to do six. Could you go back again? Was that funding reason, or was that the matching dollars? What was?
Yes, Madam President, Commissioner Reese. We looked at the city of Norwood was the one that we were not able to fund this time around. As I mentioned in my presentation, folks that have received grants in the previous year often are scored lower, and that was the case with Norwood. They had done a Montgomery Road corridor project that I think I presented to you a couple of months back, and this was a follow-on to that project. But because they had just received funds last year, that we were not able to extend it to them this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that's, that's a good thing, because oftentimes, I know I look at the list and see they're getting it again, they're getting it again. So that's good. That's a good criteria to look at, for now, anyway. So how long, not would they have to wait, so next year they have the opportunity to try again, correct, Steve?
That's correct, Madam President. They, I think it is a good project, and so we look forward to working with, continuing to work with the city of Norwood. But yes, that little knock that we have in our scoring system will go away next year.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you all for the presentation. No, I just, I love this program. It's one of the best ways that we can partner with the local jurisdictions. So I applaud the work, and I'm delighted to see these projects. Thanks for the background.
Great, great thing. All right, so Joy, you ready?
I am, and Holly Christman is helping me with the PowerPoint, sharing her screen. So I am presenting information on the 2021 nonprofit services. And, and similar to the mini-grants, this is a process we go through to share information with you. And as Jeff said, make sure that. And as Jeff said, make sure that our, the recommendations that have been made by the Advisory Committee follow the policy direction that the commissioners would like to take. So the Commission, the Community Development Advisory Committee serves as the agency that reviews this information. Here we go. So I'll share with you, the competitive awards began in 2018. Prior to that, the federal government allowed us to provide funding to nonprofits without a competitive process. But that changed and was effective for us in 2018. We are limited to 15% of our grant award under normal circumstances for public services, which would be $525,000. We do have the benefit right now of $250,000 of CDBG COVID funding that has to be used for folks affected by COVID. So we've added that to the $500,000 that was budgeted for a total of $750,000. We had a very open process this year for the RFPs. We had met with 63 local nonprofits that had received CARES funding. We met with them back in March for a question and answer and session about the CARES funding, and then had a second meeting for everybody and talked to them about, I'm sorry, we talked to the folks who had received CARES funding about block grant funding, and some were eligible to apply. They also then attended another question and answer session we had for anybody interested in applying that was held in April. We, and then we also had sent this to every, to our outreach list, which includes associations, chambers of commerce. It's probably 50 or 60 organizations that are that are on this email list. And then lastly, we, of course, do a legal ad for, as we were required to, but for the Inquirer and the Cincinnati Herald. So that was the outreach that we provided. Next slide. Oh, I mentioned that minimum request for the funding is $50,000, and we do not have a maximum request. So for 2021, we restricted the services that were eligible for the funding due to the existence of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding, as well as tax levy funding that is used for senior services and mental health recovery services and other issues. This is, so this is the shortlist of what was eligible. So this included access to prescriptions, employment training or workforce development, legal representation for eviction prevention, access to food, foreclosure assistance, and other legal assistance, and then small business development. The next slide, we had 32 applications this year, which was a record. The total ask was almost 3.6 million, and 19 of the applications were eligible for a total of funding ask of 2.25 million. In 2020, to put that in perspective, we had 17 applications for a total request of 1.6 million, and then 15 were eligible for 1.4 million. As we do with all of our processes, the Community Development Advisory Committee met twice to score and discuss and deliberate the recommendations. The recommendations include nine organizations for the total amount of $750,000. Four of these organizations are new sub recipients of block grant funding. So these are new relationships for us with this HUD funding. So you can see the list that's in front of you. The requested amounts were, by and large, more than what was provided, except for the minimum local allocations of 50,000 for several organizations. So these are listed in ranking order, the rank order from the Advisory Committee. Women Helping Women with 50,000, Lesoup with 125,000. Legal Aid Society for Legal Representation for Eviction Prevention is recommended at 75,000. The Free Store Food Bank for Expanded Access to Food is 125,000. Pro Seniors, which is legal services for seniors, is recommended 50,000. Cincy Smiles is a new one as well. That's a workforce development program to train and place folks into dental hygienist positions and and change their trajectory for for income, earned income potential. And then next is Legal Aid, which is legal representation for foreclosure prevention and direct assistance for mortgage holders who do not have a COVID-related reason for being behind in their mortgage, since that cannot be covered by other federal funds. And then we have St. Vincent de Paul Charitable Pharmacy with a recommended award of 125. And then Pink Ribbon Girls, which is, again, a new one that is providing food to people at 130% of poverty or less for their families, expanding from three times a week to five times a week while they're going through their chemotherapy, and that's $50,000. The next slide shows the history of the organizations that are recommended for funding. You can see some of them have been receiving funding for four years, some three, and then some of them are two years or one year. So you can see the variety of services throughout the years, and then also the trend that we're building on investment that we've made with organizations that are leveraging our funding and and do a good job of getting access, getting services to people throughout Hamilton County for for our purposes outside of the city. I forgot to mention that at the beginning, as the City of Cincinnati has their own block grant funding for city residents. With that, I will be happy to answer questions.
Wow, thank you, Joy. I have a few comments, but I'll open it up to Vice President Reese. Any questions or comments as it relates to this funding?
Thank you, Madam President. I was thinking the same thing, a lot. No, I think this is great information and hopefully filling some of the gaps because while a lot of people have been hit by COVID, there were some people who were hit before COVID who also need help and services. So I just think this covers a lot of, a lot of ground. So yeah, so thank you for the report.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Joy, for the presentation. So a couple of things, I just want to note that the, we had more applications this year because of the relationships that you and other staff, Holly and others, have built with this nonprofit community. And so I just want to applaud the idea that, you know, the exposure to county assistance is higher than ever, and the applications were higher than ever. So I just really think that is something to be recognized and celebrated. And the other thing that you, this slide shows no better than any other is the balance between organizations that, as you say, we continue to build on our previous investments, but there are also opportunities for new organizations to come in and start to receive funding through the county. And so it is not the same folks over and over again. There's a nice balance here between new and old. So I again want to just kind of recognize, I know that's intentional, and I want to recognize you for doing that. The one thing that I don't know that's so much a question is, again, a note of recognition. You said in one of the previous slides that there were quite a few applicants, and as you tried to drill down, you were able to identify those that were eligible. And so it gets to this idea, and I asked about this because it's a pretty significant gap. And the answer to the question was, why are so many organizations not viewed as eligible? Some of them simply lack some of those backroom services to provide a complete application or an application that responds to, you know, what we're looking for. And so we in the ARP have set aside, I think it's 4 million, for these backroom services for small businesses and for, you know, it could be extended to nonprofits, to help them better respond and and be part of these funding rounds. And so I really think that is something that we've not done in the past, but I think it's important to provide those kinds of services for those that otherwise can, you know, access this kind of funding. Especially reminds me of the PPP through the federal government where a lot of small businesses just didn't have the capacity to get in line quickly enough to get that funding, and so they were at a disadvantage. And so we're kind of trying to correct that and balance that out. So I just think this is pretty good news all the way around. Thank you.
Yeah. Joy, did you want to say something?
No, thank you.
Well, just a couple of things. I met with Joy and Holly right before the meeting and and asked some questions. They answered some questions. This is just awesome stuff for Hamilton County. A couple of comments I wrote, hopefully I can read them. But you were saying, Commissioner Drehouse, about making sure that they read the whole application because you don't want to eliminate yourself, you know, if the committee has to do that, that's one thing. But please read thoroughly. And Commissioner Reese said a lot of things that I was going to say also, but just the whole criteria that you have for people that have, that can apply, from what I've read and seen, the criteria is excellent and such a thorough review process. And no bias built in. You have to meet these certain standards. And so I think it's great that people know what's expected. And then, once again, it was said, last time we had 17 applications, we had 32 this time. And yeah, it does go to the fact of your relationship, you and Holly and other people in the community. But also, the board was very adamant about, I think at one point, it's like, we didn't get any applications for this. We wanted to extend it longer. Because I said, why are people not applying? So they're hearing about it, we're getting the word out, and that is just absolutely awesome. And then, Joy, correct me if I'm wrong, you were saying the advertisement goes to the Inquirer and the Cincinnati Herald. I think at one point that Cincinnati Herald was not getting the advertisement or not. Because I, no, they always got it.
Not this. We've not had any problems. We use them for all of our competitive awards.
Maybe it was another error, another funding, and I was saying, well, why don't we expand it a little bit? But the other thing I wanted to bring up, which is awesome, we were saying about new nonprofits, getting the new ones, and that's what you guys have done and continue to do, and I think that's great, and the word is is getting out. So I want to thank you and Holly and Steve for all that you guys are doing. We're, we're doing exactly what we, what the the board is asking you to do. And so we certainly appreciate, this is another light at the end of the tunnel for people. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
I did forget to make one comment, and that is, well, two. One is that our team is wonderful. We have Emily and Claire, that Emily Carnahan and Claire Meyer really, really took the bulk of the work on this. So thank you to them. But but also, we always have a Q and A for folks who do not get funded. So that will be set up in July. So all those organizations that were deemed ineligible can come and find out why. It can have, we have a group meeting, and then we also meet one on one so they can learn what to do for next year. So I just wanted to make sure to add that to the discussion.
That is, that's awesome. Thank you for bringing that up. And also, those who need some technical support, I remember you guys have provided technical support to some that might have got monies, but they needed more skills to be able to use the money effectively. And I thank you guys for that technical support that you provided also. Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving next to our next item is update on housing assessment for affordable housing program recommendation. And Joy, you're on here again.
Yeah.
Steve's gonna start us off.
I'm just gonna kick it off real quick. Thank you, Madam President. So we're working together as a team on this affordable housing assessment and strategy. And you might recall that we were in front of the Commission about a month ago when the folks from LISC and CBI presented some of their findings with the jurisdictional plans that they've been doing. And so that's one piece that's going on. The other is a countywide assessment and strategy. And that's the one that we are looking forward to bring to you toward the end of the third quarter. And that's the one that does an assessment of what are we doing as a county right now around affordable housing, trying to figure out what the gaps might be, and then coming up with a strategy to kind of tie all those policies and actions together. And that becomes all the more important with the American Rescue Plan dollars that you have allocated toward affordable housing. So we're really fired up about that plan. It's going great. We're continuing to work with LISC and CBI. Joy's staff is incredible on this, just really getting getting farther, further along. But we do still want to be nimble and opportunistic, and and I think that's what this program that Joy will tell you about details is really about. We don't want to sit and wait till the plan is over before we take advantage of things that are right in front of our face. So, Joy, if you want to dive into those details, that'd be great.
Okay, so you received some communication from the county administrator on June 11 about 2021 funding and having an affordable housing earmark. We have discovered over the last several weeks that many, well, actually several months, that many projects are facing a budget shortfall due to increased, increased costs for construction. Anybody that is, has toyed with doing some work in their home has has found out that it's hard to find lumber. It's hard to find electrical supplies. It's by, you know, there's, there's a lot of change in demand and supply due to the pandemic. So late last, early this year, we did fund some home projects that were currently, that already had, already had county funding with additional funding so that they could meet their budgets. And we found out that since then, there are at least four, if not more, other projects that have budget shortfalls. So we wanted to, to act quickly to help, but also to use some of the prior year home funding that we have available as well as some current year funding, and then to, to program the $1 million that the commissioner set aside in December for affordable housing. So this proposal is to, to allocate $1.5 million that it can be given to projects that do not have current county funding. So there are several projects that already have the maximum of $500,000 with county funding. We want to keep that that precedent. So the details for the project, the project is, the same details for this funding, these, these, I'm sorry. These guidelines follow our home program right now. So we've suggested a $50,000 maximum subsidy per unit, and that's, that's based on our policies. That's not a HUD policy or any other policy with a maximum of $500,000 per project. The cost, the funding can be used for pre-development, soft costs, closing costs, and anything that is related to the project. The maximum income for rental housing will be 60% of the area median income. And for homeownership, it would be 80% of the area median income. And then these would be forgivable loans that, once the affordability periods end, and the, that would be anywhere from five years to 20 years, depending on the project, and, and, excuse me, that is set up by HUD. Set up by HUD, but also OFA and other regulations, again, we're mirroring the same practices. The proposed scoring criteria is listed here. Obviously, our most important criteria is the budget shortfall. And we lay, we outline how you get five points, 10 points, 15, 20, 25, just as we do for all of our, our competitive awards. And then some other criteria, serving special population, that is home specific, as well as the MBE in Section 3, and the completion schedule. So the, the timeline is quick. We want to get this out quickly and give a one-week turnaround. The projects are all under, under, currently under construction or ready to close. So it's not like folks are starting from scratch. Then we will have the staff underwriting and the National Development Council staff to review, as we always do for our affordable housing projects. And then the Community Development Advisory Committee would review and make recommendations. I believe this is supposed to be July 9. It says July 2. So this is July 9. We're giving ourselves a little bit more time, especially with the holiday schedule. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Joy. I was having a question about the one-week turnaround when the RFP goes out. Why the one week? Because I do hear you say that you're going to give the committee a little more time to review. And just wondering, you know, the one week seems a little short. I mean, I guess if you want the money, you want to do the project, you'll do it. But I mean, there could be things that happen. Why the one week, I guess I'm asking?
We've, but we were asked by folks that are trying to close on projects to make this as quick as possible, that they already have their, their, the data together that they had applied to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency for Tax Credits or the Federal Home Loan Bank or Cincinnati Development Fund. So the information is there, and they, they, they're anxious to close in in June or July and get, and keep things moving. So.
So to help them on the front end, so that helps a lot. They already have the data. It's ready to go. And really, a week is really kind of pushing, making it even longer than it needs to be because they're anxious about the ability to do it. So thank you so much. I don't have any other questions, but I'll open it up for Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think we had this discussion yesterday, so I got most of my questions answered. I do want to highlight something that we talked about and something I know that is important to all of us. And Joy also indicated that we probably have some data on that, but certainly something we want to put at top of mind. As we're doing these projects, as a county, with our county funds, we don't have a CROSE study yet, disparity study, which fortunately is required for us to have the goals to make sure that they had, there's inclusion. uh, disparity study, which fortunately is required for us to have, uh, the goals to make sure that they had, there's inclusion. However, when we're using federal funds, which this is a federal fund piece, some of these others are federal funds. Um, there are laws on the books from the federal guidelines for, uh, they have MBE and DBE, uh, things as well as I believe Title III. And so those are some areas that we can highlight, uh, when we're doing these type of projects to have the inclusion as we're waiting on the disparity study for other, uh, projects that don't have the federal dollars. Uh, and so Joy had mentioned that, I know we have some numbers. Uh, but I know, uh, I want to thank Joy because she said we always can do better. Uh, and we'd like to highlight those things as we're putting these, uh, grants on the ground in terms of affordable housing or any type of federal, uh, construction, uh, goods and services, uh, type of thing. So I just wanted to highlight that and I wanted to thank Joy when I mentioned that. Uh, she stepped up and said, hey, yes, uh, this is something, uh, that is on the books. It is the law and it's something that we can certainly continue to do better at. So I wanted to just, uh, thank Joy for that and highlight that because that's the area that we can make some, some impact as we're waiting for the disparity, uh, study to come back. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Greenhouse.
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Joy, uh, again for the presentation. Uh, so as you talk about, um, some projects that are waiting for this last piece in, you know, this gap funding. Um, I'm, I wonder, I don't, I don't, all of this looks good. Um, the amount of money, I don't know if it's adequate or not. I guess we'll know after we put the RFP out and figure that out, uh, by way of responses. But, um, I, I wonder how this will inform us going forward when we look at the, the large, much larger amount that is contemplated through the ARP. And, um, we will hopefully look to projects like these where, you know, we can be, um, gap funding to push them over the edge. Uh, and, and I just wonder in the context of that, if, do you have any sense of what amount of money is needed for that kind of thing? Um, I know, I know this is like, uh, just over a million, but what, what do you think? Um, do you have any sense of it?
Right now, the projects that I've, I'm aware of have a $4.5 million gap. And this is a million and a half that we're putting out. What they've told me is that other funders have said, go look under every rock and then come back to us. So, um, they, they can continue to look for, or you know, ask for funding from their existing funders and lenders. Um, they can also, as well, and then OFA, OFA is going to be increasing the amount of funding being provided is what I've been told. Um, but they can also go to the city of Cincinnati and ask for funding from them. Um, they, they're just trying to fill their gaps as best they can and, and trying to come, you know, it's, it's in everybody's best interest. All of these funders are counting on these projects to go forward and OFA wants the tax credits to be used. So it's sort of all hands on deck at this point. Um, and clearly, these are, these are contingency, the, the funds are awarded on a contingency basis. You know, assuming that they find the other funding to move forward. Um, so that, that's the best insurance, I guess, we can hope for.
The 4.5, that's a significant amount of money that's needed for some of this. And, and I hear you saying that they're, they're going to leverage what we do against other providers, you know, and maybe get those last dollars in. So, um, okay, well, it, it, you know, it sounds great. I think this is exactly where we need to be. I just want to remember this, uh, as we move forward regarding housing in general. Um, and also note that, um, in this, in the larger context, um, the city of Cincinnati is also moving around in this housing space. And I just want to make sure that, um, both, uh, housing projects in the city and outside the city are, um, intentionally included here, uh, as we think about housing. Cause I, I, I don't know that we want to get into a situation where, um, our efforts are all concentrated, but rather spread out countywide. So just, just something I'm thinking through. But thank you for, um, the information. I, I again, think this is a great use of those dollars that we allocated last year.
Sure. And we will have more discussion in July and August, um, with stakeholders in the affordable housing world. Uh, my phone's ringing off the hook. I can't imagine what yours are about ideas for spending the $40 million. So, um, we will be using the stakeholder engagement to talk about our affordable housing gap analysis that Steve was mentioning as well as the ARP funding. So stay tuned and, and I want people who are watching to stay engaged. So.
Very good. And I know HUD will certainly be sending more money down. They sent some money down, more money will be coming. And I just think about all the people that we can reach with that tentative, uh, draft that we have in front of us for the ARP, uh, money. So thank you all very much. This is a great day in Hamilton County. I mean, I just want to say that I'm so excited. I know our board members are also excited, but thank you all for your work. I was going to save that speech for when Tim came on, but I just needed to say it now because you guys have brought so much to us today. We are working here in Hamilton County. We are getting things done for the people that are in need. And I'm just so proud of that and so proud of you guys. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Okay, let's move forward. Our next item on the agenda, um, is a presentation regarding summer youth employment program from the Director of the Year, the JFS Director of the Year, Tim McCartney. How are you today?
I am well, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you. Um, and fortunately for you, the, uh, the, uh, the director that you just referred to won't be making the presentation. It will be, uh, mostly Kevin Holt. But to lead, to, to follow up on your, your lead as it relates to great things for, for Hamilton County, uh, you're going to hear about a couple of things, summer youth and also a Mike, a micro certification, uh, program that we're doing with the Urban League and with Easter Seals, both of which are, are designed, uh, their workforce development efforts, economic development efforts, and also efforts really to try to keep some of our younger people, uh, here um, and working, uh, rather than getting educated here and, and, and going somewhere else. Um, so I'm going to share my screen with you. And by the way, both of these things, Kevin Holt and his, his staff will be out on the bus uh, this weekend and going forward to promote these things, uh, within, as well as a number of other JFS things that will be associated with the bus, um, as well. So let me, uh, share my screen here. And naturally it doesn't show up. Unbelievable. Um, Kevin, if you want to start talking about summer youth, I will continue to search, um, and determine what happened to my, uh, document. Um, but if you want to start with summer youth and then answer questions and then go into micro certifications, hopefully by that time I will have my technology figured out.
Madam President, I'm a little concerned. We got all this good news and all of a sudden the computer wants to freeze up on us.
I would say it's hard for the course for 2020, but that's no longer the case. Oh, there you go, Kevin. Kevin did it.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Madam President, Commissioner. It's been a strange year by any standard, but especially in dealing with these kinds of services. Summer youth is challenging because you've got to get it up really quickly and then bring it down really quickly on the backend. So it requires a lot of logistics. So we've done a slightly different model this year. You've got a lot on your agenda, so I'm not going to drag this one in quickly through it. But if any of you want more paper, more details, more reporting on it, we've got it all. We just don't want to bury you in it. So, summer youth this year, as is typical, we'll go from May to October. We're stretching it out a little bit longer on the backend to make sure we get all the dollars out. We're going to spend a million and a half dollars. These are traditional TANF dollars, so they're pretty flexible, uh, serving families with kids in the home typically. Uh, serving youth ages 14 to 18, we're paying them $10 an hour. There's some debate, we'd like more flexibility with that, but the dollars we got came with some strings. So $10 an hour is what we're doing. But we're not just doing work experience. And I don't mean to speak ill of work experience. That's a great thing. But we're also issuing certifications to kids. So kids, young people are coming out of this program with vocational training of a sort. At the very least, they're in a position to compete in interviews for job opportunities. Uh, eligibility is really broad again, 14 to 18-year-old youth living in Hamilton County with a parental legal guardian. And the parent guardian's income needs to fit within broad, very broad income limits. So you can see, for example, there, household of three, um, maximum income $44,000. So that, that covers a lot of families. Our partners in this effort are Talbert House, Urban Link, Easter Seals and CAA. I was getting a little self-conscious in your earlier conversation because these are traditional partners. We don't have a bunch of new players in this field. And the reason is what I mentioned before, it's hard to do this. It's hard to cover the whole county. It's hard to ramp up and ramp down. The lines of credits are difficult. And these four players have a great collaborative relationship where they really deliver great services for our community in recent years. And, sorry. Um, I'm not sure, oh, there, there you go. Sorry. Um, I mentioned before, basically the, the kids who participate, young people who participate, they're coming up with three things that we really value, aside from a paycheck. Because getting dollars out in the community, that's valuable in and of itself. But other than that, they're coming up with basic skill certifications. So they're able to say in an interview, I can work with Word and Excel, PowerPoint. Some things a lot of people take for granted. A lot of our constituents don't take for granted. So we're raising them up, making sure they've got those skills. Uh, safety training and pandemic safety standards, tool recognition skills. We did a bunch of surveys of local employers prior to putting out this ARP this year, asking them what they want among job interviewees. And these were some of the things they said, for example, measuring abilities, ruler tests. I didn't know this was a thing, but in some jobs you go to, you've got to be able to demonstrate you can measure things. So we put that in here. Uh, skill-based training, this is the next level up. And this wouldn't be for every youth, but for youth whose vocational plan is appropriate to this, they're getting IC3 Microsoft training, NCCER, which is a construction readiness training, uh, digital content training. So that with these certifications, they can go out immediately and make more than $15 an hour. That's what we're treating as our living wage. Obviously you'd like to be at $20, $22 an hour, but that's a starting place for us. And perhaps most importantly, this is the one I have some sentimental attachment to. Each youth exits with a written career plan. So they're not fumbling forward in an effort to do good works in the hopes of, uh, having whatever economic status they would choose to have in the future. They come out with a roadmap that shows them how to get there. The application is very straightforward. It's all online. We've done a ton of outreach. We're struggling a little bit with enrollment, but I'm confident we'll get there in the end. And, uh, this is, as Mr. McCartney said, this is one of our emphases on the bus that will be out on this weekend and will be out in subsequent weeks, making sure this is in every neighborhood in the community.
Thanks, Kevin. Yeah, we're struggling a little bit, I think, with the same thing, Kevin, that, um, employers are struggling with is just, um, normally by this time, when we do a summer youth program, we have to shut down the application process because we've received so many that we, our funding won't support it. Um, we're lagging behind that now. And, uh, that seems to be related to, uh, you know, the, the, that folks may have taken higher wage jobs that other people have not gone back to. Um, but as Kevin said, we're, we will go down swinging, uh, one way or the other of, of promoting this as much as we possibly can and serving, um, as many youth as we can.
Exactly. I can jump on to the next topic and quickly through that. But did you all have any questions about that one?
Yeah, let me just, um, see if we have any questions about this one. And so, uh, the training and certification is, is excellent. Um, I, I'm thinking about the youth who can't fit into any of that, that really, uh, may be more, I don't know, physical, maybe gardening, landscape, whatever, um, to tap into those partners or agencies or businesses that can use, uh, young people for that. Um, so where, where are we on that?
That's a great point. Thank you. As much work as we've put into recruiting participants, we put that much in more work into recruiting employers. We really want to cover the full spectrum. And as you say, everybody should have an opportunity to play to their gifts. Is that you've got a path to go through this where you're spending 90% of your time on that work site, doing that thing, ideally with a subsequent job offer. For most kids though, for most young people, would love to wrap that hands-on experience or brand some sort of industry recognized certification.
Mm-hmm.
Or next and play with both of those things on your resume.
Thank you. I mean, that's a great answer. And so as you were saying, uh, Kevin, you can wrap both of those into, uh, what you're doing with the youth. So that's great. The only other thing I wanted to ask, it looks like, um, it's about a six-month program. And what I'd like to advocate for and I'll work with the other commissioners is to extend it even longer using some of our ARP money because we are all, uh, concerned about our youth. Um, and so if this program or something like this program, uh, or we can have some forethought to think about maybe six months after this, make it like a year program. I know it's a lot of work, um, and, uh, maybe Tim will come back, I don't know. But, uh, to extend the program would be, would be great. But this is just awesome. This is what we wanted, uh, for our youth. And it's a great, great start. Very good. So I'll open it up to Vice President Reese.
Madam President, if I may, just so to kind of address your, we can extend the program and make it year-round. Uh-huh. We have toyed with that, um, in the past and we're, we're pretty much poised to do it, uh, before the pandemic hit. Um, and then last year, obviously doing a summer youth employment program, um, was basically impossible. Um, because, because things were not, nobody was doing anything in person. But we certainly can do that. Kevin has done planning around, uh, doing something like that. So it is an excellent thing. And, and I think we may have a better handle on what the, what the world's going to look like, um, perhaps at the end of October, uh, than, than we do right, right now. Particularly after, you know, you guys are implementing so many things through the, um, American Recovery, um, Act. And, um, people are coming back to downtown. You know, there's definitely more people here, all those, and schools will be back in session. So I think we'll have a better handle on that and how we can likely serve. So, um, I, I, we're all in on that is, is really the answer. Kevin?
I just, I'd elaborate. We've done this in the past where we extended to the holiday season. If you can get to December, you really connect kids to a whole bunch of holiday jobs. And that's a great opportunity to leverage some of these efforts.
Great. Very good. And just lastly, I looked at some of the criteria, um, about live, having, uh, living at a residence and having parent, um, in, uh, income and things like that. I'm thinking out, maybe outside the box, I'm sure you guys have already thought about it. What about those young people that are in a group home? Uh, would that resident advisor be that considered that parent and agreed? I mean, you wouldn't look at income at that point. Um, so how would that work?
We can treat them as a household of one. The, the state legislature a few years ago came in and wrote these nice eligibility criteria. So we can include them. We're encouraged to include them and they're written in as a poverty population.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, Vice President Reese.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. And, uh, those are some good questions. Um, one of the things, I, I think this year is a little, uh, different because we just came out, we didn't know if we were going to be able to even, you know, be out here without masks and back out the house, um, you know, this summer. We didn't know what it was going to look like. And, um, you know, for, for me, um, back to my, my days as the Vice Mayor, I never had less than 2,000 young people working every summer. And I want to get up, back up to that number. And I know it will take us having to work collectively with us and what, uh, Cincinnati's doing and our other municipalities, because they also have summer programs. One of the things that I'd like to see us move toward, um, and I've been saying this for a while and I think the, the city's looking at it. But I want to make sure wherever, wherever our young people are, whether they're in the city of Cincinnati or they're in a municipality or township, they all have equal opportunities and access to, uh, youth employment. And so I just would like to see it more institutionalized. Uh, not this year, but as we move to our planning next year. And we've got, you know, um, the, uh, American Rescue Dollars, but we have some other, and we have these dollars and some other dollars. But looking at something more like a, what we had when we had CCY, we had an institution that was doing training. You could be high school, uh, 14 years old, all the way up. But you also, we have students coming home for the summer from college. And, uh, they had a college program. So some of the college people were, uh, supervisors for the high school people. And they, you know, you have like this whole, uh, kind of a reunion of folks who came through. And they, you know, you have like this whole kind of reunion of folks who came through CCY and says, oh, that was my first job, or that was my first time having a mentor, or that was my first time getting the training. And it allows us to be, I think, even more holistic in looking at, like you said, the training, the certification. You know, we could have fellowship program attached to it. I'd like to see a program even down here. I know we have interns that could come for free, but have some people down here in a fellowship program like we had up at the state, Commissioner Dreehouse, where they could come out from college, they get a year of experience. They get to know all of the jobs, not just us, but they'll get to know what it's like to be a county administrator, what it's like to be over at Jobs and Family Services, what, they get all of the skill set. And then when they come out, a lot of them get the jobs, you know, within the state different departments. And so I would like to see us really, we're working with the commissioners. I'd like to see us put together something like that, that is a little more holistic and it takes in everything that each of us are saying we, we want for our youth as well. But it also helps us measure and see how many youths are we serving? Because all of us are elected countywide, whether you're in the city of Cincinnati or you're in, you know, you're in Lachlan or you're in Blue Ash, we represent everyone. So if we could kind of work some, toward something like that as we're putting together the, the American Rescue Dollars, putting together our new budget, looking at funding that we already got coming in, like this funding. And then maybe even on our web, on a short term, our portal that we have, that five-one-three relief is really, we've been really promoting that as a board and as administration. And people now feel like, I'll go there, it has one stop for everything. And if it was maybe a way on the five-one-three relief for right now, we could have this link that you have where you can apply right on. Because, you know, these young people, they're on their, they're on their smartphones more than we are. And they believe everything should be just a button. If we can put it on there, maybe we can help promote it a little bit more to get, to get the numbers for this year. But I'd like to, Madam President, maybe for next year, as we're starting to put it together, maybe looking at something, you know, like that, more expansive. And, you know, where we have a, what I call a youth department, Office of Youth Services, where we know everything dealing with youth. We even have a button on five-one-three relief, youth services. You just go in there and it has everything you need for youth. I think that might help connect and also help us as a board to kind of see holistically, oh, we've done all this for youth, or that's for youth. And as we're individually going out promoting, Madam President and Commissioner Dreehouse, we could just say, go to this five-one-three relief and hit that button, and it'll give you everything you need to know that we are doing for you. So I'm excited about this. I think we are at a situation where we didn't know if we could have a program. So we should market as much as we can with this. But I'd like to see maybe for next year, if we start now, we can all sit down and start looking at how we can have something like a CCY type of thing that'll be a little different than CCY, but something like that, that we could promote. Because I know all three of us are very interested in our youth, you know, doing something positive. Always say, we've got to get our program to our youth before the street program gets to the youth. And I know all three of us share that as well. So that's what I like to say. In the meantime, I'll do everything I can, each of us, I know, to promote this program. And maybe our communications could get it on five-one-three relief where they can do an online application, and it'll be kind of easier for us to promote it. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you. First, I want to recognize Tim and his recognition in Columbus. Congratulations. Well deserved. I know that Hamilton County was referred to as a model for many, many things, and that's to the credit of yourself and Moira and Kevin and the team. So congrats to you, Tim. So, you know, I, I just want to say that I, I support all of what has been said so far about, you know, what this program is and what it might be in the future. And these ideas about perhaps extending it or promoting a year-round program is, it's just much like the housing. You know, we've put some significant money towards youth programming, youth services, and hopefully we can build upon and expand what's already going on through JFS and others. I mean, I, I've been approached by artworks to see if they can promote and what they do for youth during the summertime. So I think there are lots of opportunities to partner. One thing I was hoping to clarify, when you talk about ten-dollar-an-hour jobs, hopefully leading to a certification of some sort in some, in some instances, what kind of jobs are we talking about?
It would run the gambit, and it's really, it speaks to what I mentioned before, where you're taking the kid from where they are, or the young person from where they are, and moving them to the job that's going to fulfill them. So it may be construction, it may be IT. What we've really seen is growth in this economy in three or four baskets. It is construction, it is IT, and it is logistics. So there's also office and management. But when you talk about entry-level positions with real growth opportunities, real living wage, that's where the immediate opportunities are. So we're trying to not push it all, but coach kids, coach young people to make decisions that are going to lead them to economically self-sustaining positions in construction, IT, logistics, or administration management.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And I, I do want to echo too what Commissioner Reese said about fellowships. I mean, I just met my new intern this morning, and she's, as you say, coming in for free, because that's what we have, right? But if we had a couple spots available for internships that were paid, I think we might have perhaps more interest in some of the internships. And I think it's a great idea because she's, she's super excited just about learning about county government. I'm like, oh, my God, I love that about you. You know, I mean, who are these kids? But, but it's great, and, and we need to recognize that while that might not lead to a certification, it is great to put on a resume for a kid that wants to go into public service or public administration. So, yeah, just, just a lot to think about and a lot to, to think through as we think through those ARP dollars, right? And how we're going to hit our target here. So anyway, all good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I think about it, as Commissioner Reese was saying, to expand that age, because we know there's a big gap after eighteen to like twenty-one, twenty-two, even though this money is TANF money, correct, Kevin? And so that limits how far we can go, which is, that's sort of how we got the criteria of fourteen to eighteen. But to look at other pools of money that we can use for those after eighteen, that we can move forward and, and, and start a job program, a work program for them. Just one quick question. As we look at partners that can hire some of these youth, are they getting, sometimes we give them a stipend, the agencies or business for having so many young people in. I know in Lincoln Heights, we had like twenty young people, and nobody could believe we took that many. Well, we took that many because it was needed, but the other businesses did not see the advantage of having these young people running around or whatever. So it took a lot of supervision, but are they getting any kind of stipend or advantage for taking on a, a youth to work with them?
They are not. However, they do get to interview you. So they're not just assigned youth interview and get selected for that site. So hopefully they're picking youth that will participate with them. I will say, if they went, if they chose to then hire that youth subsequently for a full-time position, we could wrap WEOWA dollars around them and reimburse them up to five thousand dollars for incurred costs in upskilling those youth.
Wow.
I think the point each of the three of you have made, there's a lot of ways to leverage these dollars, the ARA dollars, the WEOWA dollars, in a more holistic model than makes it right now.
Right. That makes sense. Yeah.
I, I think one of the things that we can work on, Madam President, is sort of an inventory of youth services and programs that are out there. To Commissioner Reese's point, the, this application is on five-one-three relief, but it's under the employment aspect and summer employment in specific. But there isn't a youth bucket there, which if we did an inventory of youth services, perhaps that could be at least the start of what you're, what you're talking about.
I agree. Yeah. Okay, I'm just.
When I say we, I mean Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Tim. I'm just overwhelmed. I'm just full right now. So great job and looking forward to whatever the commission, the board can do to help. So thank you both so much. Are you going to have like a, when it starts, are you going to have like a announcement or something so the community knows when it starts, May the first?
Well, we, we have started. We're well in.
Not May the first, you've already started it?
Summer youth is well underway. We've got more than a hundred kids enrolled, and we're enrolling more every single day. So it is up and running.
No, I said, yeah, I see May the first, October, I think the thirty-first is when it ends. So, yes. So I would have liked to, okay, anyway, thank you. It's great. So we're going to be spreading the word to get more youth, as you were saying, like Tim was saying. Usually you have to cut it off, but, so they can really, once they hear about it, they can start in the, well, they can't really start in the middle if you're doing a training.
They really, they really can. We, anything the three of you can do to really push this out in the community, we're pushing it. But it's been a weird year, so we're not getting the much we're used to.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask, we'll coordinate with Bridget, but we'll get you what you need to send it out in the community. Just as, I think Commissioner Reese was saying, there, we've got QR codes on these things. So all they need is their telephone. Get on there and get it. And we'll put you in a position to help directly. Thank you.
And Madam President, just to clarify, the document that you're looking at that says May first, that was our goal to spread the program then. And when Kevin says the, the program has started, we have an application process, and we get the application process. And because we're working with vendors, they've done, you know, a lot of, and these are four very, you know, solidified vendors in, in the city and the county. So they're doing outreach. So for a few people, the program has actually started where they're with an employer and they're getting a paycheck. We're still trying to get, you know, about three hundred more kids that we can get, because there's eligibility, like you saw, there's eligibility. And then once they're eligible, then the placement with the employer after an interview. So we have plenty of time to, well, not plenty of time, we have plenty of room to really get out there and, and, and talk about it and, and let people know what the value of doing something like this is.
Great. Great. Okay, thank you both. Appreciate it. So we'll, we'll move forward to our county administrator. I don't know if I can. Wait, someone, Jeff?
President, we have one more program to tell you about.
Oh, the micro certification.
Program.
Okay. I don't know if I can handle this or not, but I'll try. Go ahead.
No, this is a great, great program. This is something that we've thought. Kevin and I have had many conversations about this sort of effort. This is also something that can be built upon going in to the future because it's really trying to connect unemployed, underemployed, young people to something that has real value fairly quickly to get into the workforce at a livable wage. But Kevin will tell you what, what this effort is, that we're putting a fair amount of money into it.
Okay. Very briefly, this is a million for in WEOWA dollars or training dollars that we have. And the state's pushed more money to us than they typically have because they've done a better job of spending these dollars than most communities have. So they've given us these dollars that we wouldn't typically spend, so we're trying new things with it. And what we're trying in this case is micro certifications. And what that really means is, these are not certifications where somebody's meant to go and get it and then go get a job in that field. These are certifications where somebody's meant to go get this certification, this training, and then compete for whatever job they want. They're bringing to those interviews good in-demand skills. So again, we did surveys of a bunch of employers and came up with what employers said they really wanted, what the gaps were. So we're working with Urban League and Easter Seals to really leverage established programs. They have the ACE and SOAR program through Urban League, a lot of data analytics, a lot of WIP fundamentals, call center training, again, focusing to our earlier topics on here in-demand jobs where people can go make a living tomorrow. We heard from a lot of job seekers in our surveys that they wanted jobs where they could brag to their family, where they could say, hey, I'm doing stuff that I'm proud of and you can be proud of before. So we're focused on those careers. But again, everybody doesn't come with an affinity for working in a call center or working in IT or those settings. So another than that spectrum is Easter Seals with their construction, their OSHA, their logistics and supply chain. So we're providing a spectrum of opportunities. I'm not convinced this is the model we'll end up with, but it's what we've got right now. And if we can build some successes here, we'll do something else next year that'll build on those. To, it echoes some of what we're doing with summer youth in that we're trying to take people and, summer youth, it was young people. In this case, it may be people of any age, but they're people who are on the margins of the middle class and push them right up in, or at least give them the opportunity to push up in if they want with some of those skills. Again, that we didn't just guess at, but we asked employers what they wanted and then asked job seekers what they wanted. And so this is the product and program we've come up with. We are paying people to participate in this so that they can pay their rent, pay their utilities while they're going through these relative training. They tend to be somewhere between a month and six weeks. But we'll serve maybe four hundred people in these programs, paying them between ten and twelve bucks an hour. So we're hopeful, we're going to keep an eye on it. And to something Tim said before, with summer youth in with this, we're working with them with training partners or vendors. We're changing their program models every day as we see what demands exist out in the community. So as we learn, we're changing, we're adapting.
Okay, thank you. Now, one thing I did notice on there, Kevin, Easter Seals had nine dollars and fifteen cents on there.
Yes.
Just wondering, I'm going to say why, I mean, why can't it be ten dollars at least?
It could be ten, it could be twelve. I asked them the same question. And they said that their experience was sometimes if they get folks paid too much while they're in training, then they will sometimes experience a wage loss when they go out in the economy. Ideally, that, that would be very suboptimal. We don't want to train somebody to go out and make less than ten dollars an hour. But based on that and their expertise, their experience in the field, we deferred to them on this.
Okay. Well, I don't agree with it. Because then you have that extra money used for miscellaneous things or whatever. You're talking about intensive job readiness credential training in construction and logistics through a four-week hands-on training. But construction and logistics, you probably will make at least ten dollars. I don't know that justification that I'll be making less. I just don't agree with that at all. I just don't. We, we talk about the minimum wage, you know, trying to go to fifteen. Now we're talking, and we're trying to maintain these people that are in this. And nine fifteen, that's, I mean, that's okay. But I think with the budget that we have and what they're doing, I think ten dollars is not, I, I just, I don't know, it just hit me. So I'm, I'm just going to make that strong recommendation.
We approach them and ask them if they've got any flexibility, if we can move that up, and we'll get back to you with the.
Okay.
I do see that they, they, they have a twenty-five dollar a week attendance bonus. So that probably, that wouldn't bring it up to ten dollars an hour, but it, you know, it might do a little bit. But point well taken, and we will follow up with these.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Vice President Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. I was, that was one of the points I was going to bring up. I totally agree. I think for us, you know, we want to have, and that's why I kind of think about having a entity, so we have like one standard. I think we got to have a standard. And all, you know, all three of us as a board, we certainly have been fighting to, you know, up the minimum wage and have a living wage, and those are the things that we promote. And so I totally agree. I think that should be, there should be equalized standard in our program in everything, in our marketing, in our recruitment, in our pay. And so that's one thing I would like to, I know we're saying we're exploring this program and, and working out some of the, the bugs. But certainly, I think that, that message of standardization is very important because when these things are promoted and we say, okay, we've got this program to, to the outside world, it's, it's us, it's one program. So I, I do hope we can, I think we should, I would say I hope, we should deal with that issue. So as we're moving forward for, you know, the permanent program next year. So thank you. uh, for, you know, the permanent program next year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse. You're muted.
This is why I never mute myself. Uh, I agree, I agree with the sentiment.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, so I know, like you said, you'll get back with us. And I was thinking, now this is us, people that use Easter Seals is, is a special population. So we wanna treat them special in a special way. So, okay. And we'll move on. Uh, any additional information that you guys want to give us?
No, thank you very much for the time. Um, and we'll be back.
Okay. Thank you so very much for what you all do. So we'll move forward to, uh, Jeff Aludor, our county administrator, for update and review of the ARP funds and distributions and, um, just more good news. So, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. And, uh, I know Tim has, uh, signed off here, but, uh, uh, just doubling down on the, uh, uh, the conversation from earlier, um, in the meeting and Commissioner Drehouse and, uh, and, and, uh, Commissioner Summer Adumas, congratulations to Tim on the, the Director of the Year Award. I will say I had, oh, Tim's back on. So he had to come on for this. So, um, I will say I had the pleasure of being up in Columbus on Friday, um, as this award was presented to Tim. Um, a year delayed, right, Tim? Because of, because of COVID. Um, but I, I can honestly say that, um, and I, I know the commissioners know that, uh, the respect in which, uh, we here in Hamilton County, um, hold, uh, Tim, Director McCartney. Um, if it's at all possible, um, that respect is amplified, um, by ma, orders of magnitude amongst his colleagues uh, in Columbus. And it was just, and, and I guess rightfully and understandably so, they've had the chance to work with him for thirty some odd years, right? Um, but it, it was just fantastic to see, um, the, the, uh, just the praise and, 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 uh, and recognition that Tim received on Friday. So just really wanna congratulate him again. Um, and, uh, and thank him for all of his years of, of hard work. So, Tim, sorry, didn't mean to make you jump back on the, on, on the call. But again, just wanted to, it, it was a great event. Just wanted to thank you for all of your work and congratulate you again.
That, thank you. That's, that's very kind. I appreciate it. You should know that your county administrator was also complimented very highly on, on Friday, uh, while he wasn't there. Um, CCAO made a presentation about, um, how counties are allocating our funds and how they're planning to, to do that. Um, and CCAO made a presentation to all eighty-eight counties and they singled out Hamilton County's process.
Wow.
Um, their stakeholder process and they singled out, uh, the, you know, the draft document that Jeff and Holly uh, put together, shared a link to it, uh, for other counties to, to look at. Um, and, and the word that was used is Hamilton County is way ahead of other counties in this planning. So, and they just thought the, the stakeholder process was really, really um, appropriate and effective and led to, um, a very, very, um, robust, uh, document. But, um, and I would certainly like to thank, uh, Jeff and, and the three of you. Um, you know, you, you all took a chance on somebody that you didn't know very well. Um, to, uh, to, uh, take on this position and you've been nothing but, uh, kind and supportive to me. Um, and that means the world to me. Um, so I truly appreciate, uh, that. Um, and appreciate that, uh, that, that you took the time today to, uh, uh, to say kind words about me. That, that means a lot to me. So thanks.
You're so welcome.
Thank you, Tim.
Absolutely.
And, and that's actually a great segue into our, um, into this next agenda item on the ARP. Um, and, um, Madam President, as you indicated, uh, the, the purpose of the, of the conversation today is just to talk about next steps. Uh, the board had received a concept plan that was based upon stakeholder input, um, that was based upon, uh, it, or then went into, uh, uh, public hearings as well. Uh, we are now in the stage where the administration is in the process of taking the, uh, the input from, from public hearings, taking board policy guidance, which we have received, um, informally and, and formally. Um, and taking all the other information that we've gathered from, from the community and putting that into an implementation plan. So what you will receive over the next, uh, probably over the next two weeks, I think the timing here is that we would like to get you a, an implementation plan by the middle of next week, uh, which would give you, um, the better part of a, of a week uh, to consider it. Perhaps we put it on, uh, for staff meeting again, uh, two weeks from today with the idea of the board voting on it and approving it at the July first, um, meeting. But what you will receive, um, uh, over the next, uh, over the next week or so, um, is a much more detailed uh, version of the concept plan. Uh, it will not be a twenty-page narrative like the concept plan was. Rather, it will be uh, much more, uh, utility oriented. Um, it'll be in, in tabular spreadsheet format where it will be broken down uh, by, uh, programs that we anticipate to implement, um, relatively quickly, right out of the gate. And programs, uh, that we, where we feel that more stakeholder, uh, um, input and more expertise input um, is still warranted, given, um, the, um, just transformational nature of the program. And I'll go walk through these um, you know, here in, in a moment. Um, but it, it will, the, the document that the board receives will include the name of the program, a description of the program, uh, the amount of funding allocated towards it, uh, the timeline, various milestones, stakeholders, it's still required to be, uh, uh, to be engaged, uh, et cetera. So what I would like to do today is just walk through briefly, um, what I've heard, um, and what we collectively from the administration have heard from the board, uh, in terms of consensus around various, uh, po, uh, around policy direction. Um, Bridget, I think you have, uh, the, the slideshow that we've shown multiple times, and I don't wanna walk through the slideshow, but if we could put up that one slide, um, that shows the different buckets. There, if we could, uh, if we could put that up, uh, again, the, uh, for someone who may be watching for the first time, uh, the, the concept plan was, uh, submitted, um, around four different, uh, pillars, if you will. Strengthening public health infrastructure, stabilizing county finances and operations, addressing negative economic impacts and enhancing community infrastructure. So what we have heard so far from the board uh, is a general consensus, uh, around the need for affordable housing, um, production, rehabilitation, uh, and property maintenance. Uh, we have heard, uh, consensus around workforce development with a focus on youth and clearing the hurdles to workforce reentry such as childcare. Uh, we have heard broad support for funding, uh, for mo, mental health, uh, behavioral health, substance abuse with a focus on, uh, uh, impacts to youth and suicide prevention specifically. Uh, there was support for addressing community resiliency as it relates to, uh, preparation, uh, for future health emergencies. Uh, and we've also heard, uh, support for broadband infrastructure and affordability programs. Um, all the programs I just listed are, um, those programs that I refer to as kind of a longer-term uh, programs where these are, uh, these are elements of the implementation plan that still require, uh, in order to be, to ensure we're doing this as transformationally as possible, that still require, uh, some stakeholder analysis and stakeholder input on a, on a more intensive level to make sure that what we come back to the board with as a final recommendation, uh, is one that, that hits the mark and hits the bull's eye in terms of how we can best use these dollars. Um, both in terms of where they go in the community and how they go out. Cause I think at the end of the day, um, the process for getting the dollars out in the community may be just as important as to actually where they are targeted. So, uh, that, uh, additional intensive stakeholder process, uh, will address both issues. Um, and then secondly, there are other programs, uh, that have a much shorter lead time associated with them. All of these will not be going out immediately. There is a, um, a staffing and a re, and resource constraints around these. But in terms of programs that will be implemented much more quickly, you have things like uh, grants for the arts, nonprofits and tourism industry. Uh, there is premium pay for eligible county, uh, employees who, uh, did work, um, uh, essential work during COVID nineteen. Um, there is, um, uh, issues such as infrastructure funding, uh, with a focus on, uh, nine-one-one. Uh, and in a new EMA, consolidated EMA facility, uh, there was also consensus around lot twenty-eight at the banks with, uh, inclusive of the programmatic element of a black music walk of fame associated with that. Um, we have issues or programs like, uh, small business assistance, which we've done multiple rounds of small business assistance. We can get this into the community very quickly. Uh, on that one, we do wanna take a moment to see how our third round, which we're getting ready to launch goes, uh, before we uh, return to the board and decide, um, uh, what level to, to, uh, to script that at, but we do have that included. Um, there are programs such as, uh, the satellite office where we are looking to, uh, construct and locate a, a satellite office in the county to help us better reach, um, uh, marginalized and disproportionately impacted populations. Um, the, uh, the idea and the concept is simple enough, um, but we wanna make sure that we're locating it in the, uh, in the proper area that is, uh, that both overlays effectively with, uh, the need in the community and the flow of our workforce uh, through the community as well. So we have a little bit more analysis to go there, but we are working on some concepts on that very directly. Um, we have funding, uh, for relocation of the Lincoln Heights Gun Range, which the board is, I believe is where it was included in the initial concept plan. Uh, EMA funding support for things like warehousing and PPE, uh, purchase. Uh, we also have, uh, dollars, uh, for more quick, uh, rollout related to outreach to disproportionately impacted communities, specifically related to, um, healthcare opportunities and public benefit opportunities. Expanded access to benefits, uh, that, uh, dovetails right into the mobile tech bus. Uh, we heard earlier in the meeting from, uh, Director McCartney, who indicated that, uh, you know, JFS is primed and ready to be a part of that, to be, uh, out in the community with the bus, um, getting those benefits out into the community. So those are some of the, the, the programs that are, uh, ready for more, um, direct immediate implementation, including one, um, I, uh, neglected, um, the, uh, program that I know all three commissioners are supportive of, and that is the concept of, of homeowner mortgage assistance, uh, in making sure that, um, we are addressing um, homeowners with the need for mortgage assistance, which would be inclusive of, of, um, uh, utility and property tax, uh, assistance as well, uh, to the degree that that assistance and the need for assistance is COVID, uh, related. Uh, so that would be a program that would go out relatively quickly as well. Um, there are some programs in the concept, as we move forward with the concept plan, that we are still, um, holding in the balance and doing some additional research on. For instance, um, the, there, in the initial concept plan, there was, uh, a, um, in addition to the satellite office, there was, um, uh, the recommendation conceptually of additional capital improvements. Um, according to the Treasury guidance, those capital improvements really need to be focused around addressing COVID uh, related issues. And frankly, we did a lot of that, um, back using CARESAC dollars. Um, we do have a slate of general fund projects that we are getting ready to launch right now, uh, both energy conservation and just general capital projects, uh, that are also, uh, moving forward in county buildings. But we're assessing right now the, uh, really the, y, the available universe of projects that are really COVID-related from a capital perspective, when so much of that was done last year during CARES. Um, the, uh, concept of small business back, uh, back office support is one that we are still researching, um, within the community as well. And we have several questions out, uh, to the Department of Treasury. Uh, for instance, uh, the ability of, of, uh, of dollars to be used directly on debt service, uh, is something where quite frankly, we think that the, the prohibition on that, that was, that was raised fairly strongly in Treasury's initial guidance, um, we, we feel should be reconsidered. Um, given the, uh, the importance of debt service, uh, to the, uh, financial structure of local governments in particular, that, uh, many of the, uh, when you're paying debt service, many times it is, it uh, relates to a much more efficient way of constructing, uh, something. And many of the, in our particular case, um, met, much of that debt service relates to, uh, convention and tourism infrastructure uh, that is so important to the vibrancy of our economy and is really so important to, um, the priorities laid out by the federal government and Treasury, that we think that there is a, an opportunity for reconsideration by Treasury um, as well as, um, uh, the issue of property tax relief in general. Um, which in the interim guidance, um, there seems to be a pretty heavy prohibition against just use of dollars uh, for general tax relief or tax delay. Um, but, um, we've heard from the, from the board and others and wanna make sure that we are clarifying that, uh, with Treasury, so that as we move forward, um, to the degree we, um, uh, there are additional, um, uh, modifications to the plan that we have the opportunity to make that recommendation to the board. So that is generally where we are with, uh, pulling together the plan. Again, I walked through, through a lot there, but what the board would be receiving over the next week would be a very detailed summary of all of the programs, um, with a timeline and a description, et cetera, recognizing that some are longer term and some are shorter term. So happy to answer any questions at this point, uh, commissioners. Um, and, uh, I believe Holly is on the line as well, uh, to the degree you have some specific questions that I'm unable to, uh, answer on some certain programs.
Thank you, Jeff, for that overview. Um, I know you had also indicated that the mortgage assistance money possibly can be, uh, used for our property tax relief in some way. Um, so we're still looking at that for more, uh, clarity. Um, and then the MSD SOR rates, we were looking at the cost of whether or not we were able to reduce those rates either on a one-time basis or, you know, maybe longer. But I know you're looking into that. That's a difficult subject and it takes more investigation. So I have a couple more comments, but I will, uh, open it up to Vice President Reese as it relates to the overview.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, sorry, I was pulling up our, uh, recommendations that we had, uh, were asked to submit. Uh, wanted to get clarity on, um, so we're waiting to hear back on the property taxes and also, uh, on the SOR. Or, um, can you talk about, do we have money left over that we're gonna put aside in case Treasury comes back with the, yes, we can do this? Um, and, and one other piece on the property tax rollback. Did we get any, um, answers to what the auditor, uh, which, uh, I, I mean, I support the property tax rollback, obviously, but, uh, he had mentioned that it is, um, it is written as a, um, uh, I believe homeowner assistance program. So did, did that make any difference?
Yeah, um, so good, good questions. Um, so we have asked those questions to Treasury directly. Um, you know, I don't know that the, the, how the program is written or what it, it was called. I, I think that may be evidence that helps support, but at the end of the day, um, I think it is gonna be a very specific, um, uh, ca, I think this, these are case-by-case determinations uh, by Treasury. So we did submit that question, uh, to Treasury. Generally, the idea of, of property tax rebate and whether ARP funding, uh, could help support that as well as, um, uh, generally helping to clear, uh, property tax delinquencies and specifically property tax delinquencies, uh, that are, were the result of COVID. On that, and on that one, I think we already feel fairly confident that if there is a property tax delinquency that is related to COVID nineteen and it really goes, it, it's really part and parcel to the mortgage assistance program as well. And that if someone is in, uh, is in need of mortgage assistance, that would incl, that might include mortgage, utilities or property taxes, that we feel that, um, uh, unless we were to get some direct, um, guidance to the contrary, that that would be uh, eligible. But the others in terms of just general property tax clearances or the PTR, uh, property tax rebate specifically, I think we need additional guidance on. And so we are still awaiting for that. To answer your question about funding, um, we are, uh, To answer your question about funding, we are in the process right now of re-reconciling what our dollar amount is. There are going to be some minor changes in allocation recommendations. So that dollar amount, the reserve we had at the end of the day might go up a little, might go down a little bit, but there should be some dollars there. Additionally, I would also say that if, while I know housing is a significant policy recommendation of the board, that we do have $40 million for, for housing and something like the PTR, if it were eligible, is a housing-related program as well, to the degree it relates to property tax relief. So there may be multiple options there for how the board would consider this. But until we get that answer, we're not much more I can say about it and be accurate.
Okay, Madam President, just to follow it up on that, I do think we should put some money to the side and not allocate every single dollar. Because if it were to come back, I would like us to have that opportunity without taking. I see the 40, we got 40 million, we're going to take away 5 million that will help existing homeowners who are struggling because of COVID, which leaves us with 35 million, not to mention how much we're going to, I forget how much on here, we'll take it for homeless. And so that number starts to go down. And if you were to put a property tax rollback on, in there, that takes that number even further down in terms of creating new affordable housing. So I would just recommend that we don't allocate every single dollar, that there's something put aside since we have up to four years to use it. Put aside that if treasury does allow us to do sewer, to help you, which is, you know, MSD sewer portions bill or help us with, allows us to do a property tax rollback that was, you know, I guess promised at some point, not by us, but promised, then I'd like for us to at least be able to have that conversation and not say, oh, well, we could do it now, but we don't spend all the money or we are dipping into money for new affordable housing, which, you know, obviously we have a issue there. So that's one recommendation that I have. The other thing on the $5 million, just wanted to, I know you said we'll have some stuff that's right now, and then some things, obviously, we got up to four years to spend. And one of the things we've had some, some difficulty sometimes when we get this, these dollars, we'll vote on it, but then it's a long time before the program gets up and running. And I just want to reiterate again, there are so many people right now, you know, the bank is not waiting on them. We are referring people with steel, the bank is not waiting. The world has opened up now, the bill collectors have, they've been opened up, there's no more moratoriums out there. So just wanted to make sure when we identify this $5 million that we're able to articulate that this would be a, you know, I don't know how you want to do it, but how, or, or let me ask you, how would you do that so that these folks could get in the pipeline, you know, quickly as we, we pass, we have the money, but I know we have to pass it. And then would this be something that we could move quickly on, people could start getting help?
Yeah, so the, the idea, the idea behind that particular program would be that it would be one of the first launched. So we're still working through the channel in terms of where that would go so that it would be quickest. And so once we know that, we'll get back to the board. But yes, that, the idea and the concept was that that would be one of the first programs launched, just because, again, I think we would want the, the program, on all of these, the programs that are addressing the immediate hurt that is in the community to get out there as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Madam President. That's all I have right now, in case I hear something else. I think that was it, I was going through my notes, I'm sorry. Oh, I do have, I'm sorry, mental health. I know that was something, like you said, is important to all of us. And, and also making sure that grassroots organizations, we had a lot of, we had some testimony from some of the, you know, smaller organizations dealing with teen suicide. How would that, I just wanted to maybe answer that because I know that they had a couple people that came to our, you know, to our Zoom and testified about fitting in, in terms of something like that, because, you know, that's a big issue too.
Yeah, so obviously we want to make sure we get funding out to a, a lot of different organizations doing different type of, of work. And, you know, we went back and, and looked, not, not directly related to mental health, but as it relates to arts and nonprofits, I think we did a pretty good job last year of making sure that we got dollars into the hands of, of, of organizations that, that relatively speaking, we're, we're, we're small in nature. I think we'd want to do the same thing here. I think it makes sense, wherever possible, we want to try to find a, an organization that we can work through directly. For instance, the Mental Health Recovery Services Board, et cetera. But we want to work with them very closely to make sure that the board's policy guidance is followed as it relates to the subject matter of the organizations and of the board. All three commissioners, I believe, have, have indicated the need for looking heavily at youth and suicide prevention, but also making sure that we are getting those dollars out to, as you called it, Commissioner Reese, some of the grassroots organizations as well. We know we've got traditional community partners doing great work and we want to make sure that they're able to continue that. But we also want to make sure that some of these other organizations that have not been able to get the benefit of federal dollars, who are also doing great work in their own right, that they get some of this benefit as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Lynn Hutt gave the money specifically for housing for homeless. Do you remember how much they gave in Hamilton County just recently, about, I don't know, three weeks ago?
Talking about the, the...
It was separate, a separate money from, from FUDG, representative, not representative, what's her title, secretary?
Secretary.
Yeah, she sent specific money to Hamilton County for homeless housing. And there was, maybe you can look that up.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and, and look at it, maybe.
Yeah, it was not less than 30 days ago.
Holly, do you, do you recall that, that number? Holly doesn't, does not.
No, I don't, but I can get back to you.
Yeah, or I can make a phone call, but thank you, I appreciate it. I'll go on to Commissioner Greathouse, have a couple comments.
Yeah, thank you. So thanks again, Jeff and your team for putting all of this together. I mean, the recognition in Columbus is, you know, it's, it's due because you really did a thorough job here and I, and I think we're, we're very grateful for that. So as we thought about what we heard during public comment, the external, internal stakeholder meetings and the plan in front of us, just a few comments related to that. And I, I do, do want to say that the plan is extensive, but also is pretty on the mark. You know, I think Jeff and the team not only listened to the three county commissioners, but also the public input and the stakeholders and came up with a plan that reflects all of the above. So I just do want to applaud that. Couple of things though, and then some of it's already been talked about. I, I also highlighted mental health and behavioral health and highlighted the need for suicide prevention work and am hopeful that, that we can put an emphasis on that because that's what we heard from a lot of constituents during the public hearing. Also, that, you know, the, the outreach for vulnerable communities, I think is super important, the gun range and, and on through the list. But I highlighted some things that I hope that we could take a further look at. One is, you know, we, as you look at the list, I don't think it's super obvious as far as economic development's concerned and what we're doing here for economic development. But when you think about the allocation of these dollars, a lot of what is kind of that infrastructure work that is economic development, it does create jobs and it does help us, help businesses do better, right? And thrive in this community. And so related to that, there, there is this conversation being had kind of broadly related to costs of construction projects and some of the development that we've talked about, whether it's literally building, buildings, or parking garages, or broadband, or sewers, the costs have all gone up. And so I think it was mentioned before, I too highlighted the idea of making sure that we've got money set aside in recognition of that and don't underestimate the amount of money it's going to cost to advance some of these projects that will then spur jobs and economic development in our community. And Commissioner Reese, I too thought, there, there is a reserve amount in here, it's about $8 million. And I thought of that in those terms, but also building some of that into some of these projects that we are all supporting. Lot 28 and other things in the recommendation. So wanted to highlight that. The other one is related to property taxes also, that's been hit on. We all heard the same stuff, I'm evidently in the public hearings, no surprise there. But I, I asked the administration, you know, we heard from our treasurer about property tax relief and we have allocated, I think it's 5 million for, for, yeah, well, it's, it's related to mortgage assistance. So you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Reese, you talked about this. So the 40 million for housing and then we've carved out 5 million for mortgage assistance, but it's, it's also could be property tax relief or utility relief. And so I am wondering about the number associated with those who are back, back on their property taxes and who need to catch up. And so I've asked Jeff to look at that and I think Treasurer Winburne actually gave us that number. I just can't recall what it, what it is, but I think it's around 5 million. And so if we look at just property tax relief for those individuals that are behind, if that amounts 5 million, then we've spent all the money, you know? And, and it's, and I wonder if, first of all, that number is a, a number that we should rely on and if we want to do anything in addition to that, then either we need to go, go into some, maybe that housing, long-term housing money or maybe part of the reserve, or I, I don't know what. But anyway, I'm thinking through the same thing, you know? How can we provide immediate relief for homeowners? And, and then look at the dollar amount that we've put aside for that. So that was part of my, my message to Jeff. The other one was, and you've, you've both said it, we heard a lot during these public hearings and I, to my account, we had about 50 people testify over the course of the, the hearings. Many, many of them talked about services related to the nonprofit sector. And not only do the providers need dollars, but the people that are relying on those providers for the services that they provide need the help. And so I was wondering if we needed to do more by way of the nonprofits. And so in the nonprofit sector, it is 5 million. And so I'm wondering if we need to increase that a little bit, maybe a million or two, just to address some of the needs that we heard during the public hearings. So I've offered that. And then lastly, the, the one line in, that was recommended, I just didn't have a very, you know, I used to be a small business owner, so I'm familiar with that back office kind of accounting, attorneys, your payroll, all that stuff. But I didn't really understand what this line was getting at. And so I did a little research and my understanding here is this is a direct result, this, it's 3 million, a direct result of what we learned in the CARES Act, which was that so many small businesses tried to get in line for the PPP, the federal government, they, they couldn't, the money was spent by the time, you know, they would have gotten in line. And part of the reason they didn't get in line was because they didn't have the capacity because they didn't have a great relationship with the bank. They, they didn't have a grant writer, they didn't have an attorney that could help them through the application process. And so I think Holly and others that were running some of these programs learned that that's a real need in the community, especially as it relates to small businesses. And so this one helps those very small businesses with those things that they don't need all the time, but sometimes they need those kind of services. And so I did reach out to the Urban League and the African-American Chamber, some of those who are participating in all of this. And they were, you know, they, they recognized the need for this money. Because I was wondering, should we just go straight to small businesses and offer that support there? But we've done pretty much in that space. And so this is in addition to that and hits a different target. So, so anyway, I, I'm supportive of that. And then the other things, you know, I think we all agree are super important. So that's all I had to offer, but just a couple drill downs, I guess, to some of the recommendations that we have in front of us.
Thank you, just a couple comments. As we look at the relief for the property tax, we have to make sure that we look at those that were impacted by COVID. So the amount that we've allocated may handle that amount because we have to remember, we can only use it for that purpose. But secondly, as we look at, and we said very clearly, we don't want to be redundant as it relates to allocating funding. And I'm thinking about, for instance, small businesses, monies are coming from everywhere. Not that we're not going to give more, but rental assistance is another example. So people are getting monies, you know, from everywhere. So we need to make sure that we're not overloading or giving more when there's money coming from other places. I hear about nonprofit and I just put my little paper down. So through the CARES funding, we were able to help 60 organizations for 4.5 million. We allocated to all these organizations, which is great. And I'm not saying they don't need more, but let us not forget what we've already given. And then to make sure that the newness of other people that have gotten or other agencies or businesses, excuse me, are not forgotten. I, I heard earlier, I know Jeff, you were saying as, as it relates to making sure we reach the small agencies that are doing great things, that you guys were thinking about working through larger agencies to make that happen because they understand our mission. I'm sure we're looking at accountability, they've used money from the county before. But I think at some point, and we want to make sure that everybody is accountable and I'm not saying go to this small agency and give money, but at some point, I just want to make sure that when we give this money to, I don't know, I'll just say Talbot House, that those small businesses or agencies that spoke to us are not forgotten because Talbot House and, I don't know, CAA or whoever, they did not hear the plea of the people. So all I'm saying is for us to be accountable, I understand that with the monies. But at some point, we have to trust that even the small entities will handle the money the way they should or that they understand our mission also. Because sometimes that's how they've been getting lost because they were at, you know, at the Urban League or whoever. I'm not, I'm not picking on any particular big agency. But we continue to say that we're going to use the larger ones to funnel the money long as they don't forget the little ones, the way we want the little ones to be acknowledged. So that's all I have to say about that. And I'm, of course, one to make sure that our Hamilton County money is safeguarded. So however the best way to use it, and you guys have a record of who called in, who did. And I'm thinking about the ones that didn't call in. So anyway, I just wanted to make that statement. But lastly, I just want to say, and I want to compliment the staff because as we found out about the ARP money, some, as I said earlier, some people were rushing to try to decide where it was going to go or wanting to spend it. And I just applied our staff because even though people wanted to rest the recommendations and all that kind of stuff, that we went slow. Slow is not bad, remember the turtle won the, the race. Slow, stay focused, we were steady and strategic. And that's, that to me is more important than just, you know, deciding what we're going to do and then rushing it out the door. Because we will, that's why we're a model, because we are taking our time on this. Now for me, July 1st is the rollout for everything. I think we all come together for a rollout as it relates to people coming back to our areas, our commission room for our meetings, the Zoom calls stop. The media will be coming back July 1st. Let's see, and I think the final thing is the rollout for the ARP, the final rollout. So the people that are impacted can actually be in the room on July 1st. So when you say, Jeff, you and Holly are going to submit to us the final draft and we're going to look at it and we're going to finalize it. So I, I think people can be confident in the fact, July 1st, we're all have our consensus, we're all add in, take away from the final and then it'll roll out, everything will roll out. Everybody get to see us in person and the residents can be there, even the ones who gave the plea on the Zoom call can be in the room. So that's, that's my focus and I think you guys are just doing a great job with this. And we've all said the same thing, so that, excuse me. So that, excuse me, excuse me. And so that's where I am with it and I think we're just doing a great job, even though we have quite a bit of time to spend it, when we start spending it and we start giving it out, it will be very planned and a very good process. Because for me, and I'm sure for the other commissioners, process is the key. We have to have a process so we can fall back on those who do not follow the process. Okay. Yes.
I'm sorry, I wanted to, can I go back to the small business one?
Sure.
To make sure. One of the things that I was looking at recommending, yeah, we had passed the small business funding, we passed the navigators, I think in March, and we're kind of just now hopefully getting it moving. And we're going to look at some more money for small businesses. One of the things that I would like to see, because I'm all about institutionalizing things, and I think we found in all this process, we found also some areas where we have a need and people really, you know, have a need. And if we're going to be a county of the future, obviously, small businesses are the future throughout the county and we've invested a lot. One of the things I was looking at is having a small business office, Office of Small Business. Now, when I say that, I'm looking at a model similar to what we have with, with economic, we have a Economic Development Office, but it's an office that is managed by HCDC. So it's not technically a physical office with government workers, but they manage our Hamilton County Office of Economic Development. And with the needs that are, you know, that will continue, there are different things, technical assistance, maybe relocation or where to find a location in, in Hamilton County. It's, it's so broad. It might be, you know, how to MB certifications, where to go, how to access different things that we have available outside of just ARP money, but also a part of ARP, ARP money and CARES Act money. So my thought was to institutionalize that because that's not going to go away. And to have something similar to what we do with HCDC, using this as a launchpad for that, to have a small business, Hamilton County first ever Office of Small Business. And it could be done like HCDC is already doing some contracting with us, but it's kind of like, like you're saying, it's all this one, that one, this one. And they still can manage other contracts under it, but there's, there's an infrastructure to say, hey, we are the county of small business. We're coming out of this COVID, just like you said, we're coming out of this COVID and we're coming out swinging and we want everyone coming to Hamilton County saying, how did they do it? And so a lot of other programs, they might have small business, but they're limited geographically. So like the city has its small business, but it's limited, only businesses in the city of Cincinnati. As commissioners, we're, we're all over the county, we're not limited geographically. So I wanted to just highlight that that's one of the things that I submitted in, in the proposal to, I think it'd be a perfect time to roll this out as this is going to be four years of opportunity to just institutionalize it, bring all the different things we're doing with small business under one umbrella and have a Hamilton County Small Business Office. And we can measure and keep up and it's a permanent situation. So I just wanted to highlight, that's one of the things that, that we submitted. And what I'm kind of hearing from small businesses like Commissioner Dreehouse has said, she owned a small business, I grew up a small business, you have also been a small business owner as well. And I just think this would be good for us as a county. So I just wanted to highlight that. I forgot to say it, I was looking at my notes, trying to buy my notes and I wanted to make sure I didn't miss that point.
Thank you, and I think that's worthy of discussion for sure. I don't know, and then Jeff and his staff can take a look at whether or not there are any gaps that would need to establish Office of Small Businesses. And we can also give some input, Commissioner Dreehouse and, and myself as it relates to that, that's a new concept and new things are good. And so we need to look at, is there, is there a necessity for that? And so I said, thank you for bringing it forward and, and sharing that. And so we definitely need to look at that before we look at the final draft, that's, that's for sure, so.
Madam President, can I, can I ask, you know, I think we all submitted something to the administrator, can we share that, share our memos? Or Jeff, can you share our memos so that we all have access to each other's ideas moving through this process? I think that might be helpful.
It actually, Madam President, Commissioner Dreehouse, it actually went out just a couple minutes ago. Should have it, I think Teresa just sent it out a few minutes ago, so you should have it in your emails.
Okay.
They move fast. Just a little show off, yes. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Okay, we have more work to do. Holly, did you want to say anything?
I'm good, thank you. Appreciate the feedback.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so we have before us, and I'd like to make a motion for an executive session.
Second.
Wait, let me, I was going to, that's okay, that's okay. Sue it to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney to discuss pending or imminent litigation.
Second.
Ms. Samara Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Reese?
Yes.
Ms. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.